Are you ready, Todd? Okay. Yeah. Okay. So, I'm gonna go ahead and call the special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to order for July 9th, 2014. And let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present, as well as Mr. Dave Huber, and Mr. John Peterson, and Mr. Steve Davenport. And we also have in the audience, Mr. Dan Katz, who's also one of the attorneys for the county. So, we're gonna start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd all please join me and stand the pledge.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
So, this is a special hearing on a single item, and this is in the matter of the proposed revisions to Spokane County Urban Growth Area Boundary, including concurrent comprehensive plan map and zoning map amendments, as remanded by the Growth Management Hearings Board in case number 13-1-0060006C. We, this is a continuation of a hearing that we had initially on Tuesday, June 3rd, where we're taking testimony on initially the population allocation, but what the board has done is opened up the entire process for additional testimony, so that it gives us the opportunity to address not only the issue that was directly remanded, but also any other issues that we need to have as we develop a complete record and going back to the Hearings Board. So, in the previous hearing, I think we had approximately 20-some folks provide testimony. That testimony continues to be part of the record, so we did not have anybody that had not signed up for that evening that did not have an opportunity to provide testimony. So, we do have this evening two additional individuals that have expressed a desire to, wanna provide some testimony for the record. If you wanna provide testimony, would appreciate if you'd fill out one of the yellow slips and deliver it to the clerk, and we will take them in a first-come, first-served fashion. You're allowed three minutes to provide testimony this evening, and if you don't wanna provide testimony tonight, but you wanna be on record, please indicate on the signup slip, and we can acknowledge you as part of the record. We do have a very high-tech timer here. It is high-tech because we have the appropriate amount of duct tape on it and stuff, so we'll be timing you for the three-minute period, and when you get to the end of the three minutes, I'll give you a high sign and ask you to wrap up your comments. So, before we get started with the staff presentation, is there any comments that my fellow commissioners would like to share with the audience? Okay. Very good. Mr. Peterson? The staff was gonna make a brief presentation, then we'll open it up for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission Members John Peterson, Planning Director. As you've advertised and introduced, this is a public hearing to consider testimony on the remand of the Urban Growth Area Update that you adopted in July of 2013 in Resolution As you noted, the previous adoption of the updated Urban Growth Area Boundary and the concurrent zoning classifications and comprehensive plan designations was appealed. It was remanded by the Eastern Washington Growth Management Hearings Board in the case number that you cited, the primary purpose of which was to address the adequacy of public participation in the final population allocation of 112,112. And noted, in opening up this public hearing in June and to this continued date, it's not the sole issue which can be testified to, it is the entire matter of the record before the board with regards to the Urban Growth Area Update. This hearing is required as part of our compliance efforts with the remand from the Hearings Board, and for the record, I would note that subsequent, or prior to today's public hearing, Madam Clerk and myself have received written comments from the Riddells, Ms. Biordal, and the Schmettings, which was received prior to the hearing, but yet after the June 3rd previous public hearing. So, those written comments will be made part of the record with Madam Clerk, and I think I'll conclude, because we did have a pretty lengthy presentation at the June 3rd public hearing, and this is simply a continuation of that public hearing to further hear public testimony on the record regarding the allocation and all the other issues that were remanded by the Hearings Board. So, unless you have any questions, I will close, and then we'll take public testimony.
Any questions for Mr. Peterson? Very good. So, as I indicated earlier, we are taking testimony on the full record, and I do have two individuals that have expressed a desire to provide testimony. I have Mr. Johnny Humphries, and then Mr. George Riddell. So, with that, Mr. Humphries, if you'd like to...
Thank you.
...come to the podium?
I'm Johnny Humphries, live in Belavista Lane in Riddell, Washington. Want to speak in favor of continuing to include my property within the growth management boundary. I did submit a letter prior to your last meeting, when I was out of town, but I did want to give a bit of an update to that letter. Previously, I've spoken with you about the benefits to the community, as well as my family, of including our Whitetail Ridge property located at Highway 27 and Bel Air, also showing his 40th Street on there. And a lot of infill has occurred around the area. We've had, thank you very much, we've had an awful lot of influx. We've had apartments built, Alberston Store, apartments built, cemetery bought up this property, more apartments going in here, and I am now an island with my property completely surrounded by development and right on the border with the growth management. I'd spoken earlier about we provide a good balance to the other land that's still available. If this land, if the Cemetery Association sold it and someone developed it, it would be the opposite of our land. We have hilly, treed land, ideal for upscale homes. This would be ideal for high-density growth, such as the apartments that are already going in in the area. But a further update, now that I'm well into the development planning and working with the county, we're also providing quite a bit of benefits to the community. For instance, sewer. We are providing sewer all the way across our property and into the existing sewer on 32nd, so that not only will sewer be available for our prior cluster development and the homes that we build, but all the homes to the east will be provided. We're actually building, agreeing to build out that sewer at our expense, and then have the county participate later in their share of that cost by just rebates on connections. So, anybody who cares about the groundwater environment issues will be happy to know that we're making a good contribution there. Likewise, on the roads, this road, 40th, is a narrow road, which has got a lot of slope to it and a bend to it, and has a lot of foot traffic. And it's actually a situation that needs addressing, because you've got a lot of bicycles, a lot of walkers, and people coming down and not real long visibility as you're coming down that hill, especially in icy conditions. We're agreeing, as part of the development, to widen it, to put in sidewalks, to put in curbs, to put in swale, all required by the county, but it's, my point is, it's for the goodness of the community that we're gonna be making that improvement. We're putting in higher-than-average-cost homes, therefore, higher-than-average taxes, and my summary is that it remains a good decision to leave this property inside the growth management boundary. Can't speak to the population in the whole county, but there's lots of folks moving into our neighborhood.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Humphries. Any questions for Mr. Humphries? Great. Thank you. And so, Mr. George Riddell?
Great, and good evening, and thank you. Obviously, in front of each of you commissioners, you have a letter of where I'll be coming from tonight, and also, I had sent the board and commissioners a letter previously, and this is, I think, our fourth or fifth time of having the opportunity again, and your courtesies to allow us to testify in front of you. Again, we're here in behalf of the Riddell Family Estate requesting inclusion of the two parcels, and most importantly, supporting of the expansion of the UGA under the Remand Act. We appreciate that. Our property, 1628 South Barker Road, is located in green acres and was included in the Number Five Alternative Plan or Study Area. We submitted an application for inclusion in 2005. We feel the property has met the county's criteria, as outlined by you, the county, and within the criteria of the Growth Management Act, and that specifically be areas of location. Obviously, seeing that map more inclusively, looking at it in terms of South Barker Road and right adjacent, both parcels of 553019055, and in that particular area there as well. Most noticeably, you'll notice the fact that it is bisected by the recently completed Chapman Road Project Extension, which contains sewer utilities, water storage facilities, and power and water on, at the property's edge. More specifically, is what it looks like today. Urban growth criteria already characterized by urban growth that have adequate existing public facilities and service capacities to serve such development is outlined within those RCWs. Seventy-six buildable acres. The property is bisected by recently completed Chapman Road, like I already said. And also, criteria in areas already characterized by urban growth that we served adequately by combinations of both existing public facilities and services that are, which are not provided by either public or private sources. We'll have you, and as you're well aware, the Chapman Road Extension Project and the sewer utility easement was provided at no cost to the county. The cost in the construction of the road, which we had discussed this afternoon in a relatively lengthy meeting, was at the expense of the, shared expense of the property owners in relationship, again, at no cost to the Spokane County. And in areas of remaining portions of urban growth, and so on and so forth, the parcels 9055 and 9056 will become sandwiched between existing UGA properties, as you can see on this particular map here. So, it's pretty obvious to me that, that we've made an honest effort in reference to our family, to work, to your compatibility, to work with you individually, and in terms of fulfillment of our family dream, our parents' dream, was to be a part of the Spokane County, and we hope you can make that deal. I do have a small question in reference to, in terms of that decision process, you know, we've, we've, we've made a pest of ourselves with Steve, and of course, John, and just addressed the attorney, but in terms of when will a formal decision be made on the expansion, or who will, or how will that be made, and from who will we receive this notification? Is this something that will come from the state or from the county, in terms of a timeline or the specifics of that? So, that would be questions that I would have for the commissioners and/or the powers to be. Thank you.
So, Mr. Huber, are you prepared to answer that question, or would that be something for Mr. Peterson, or do you want one of us to give a shot at that? Peterson's pointing to you.
Well, I, I'm not sure I have a good answer. I think, I think it depends on several things. Most important, which I think comes down to just, just how much information the board wants, you know, how long it's gonna take us, depending on what kind of, what kind of further hearings or study or anything may be, may be necessary to make a decision. So, that's a long way to say I don't really know how long it's gonna take.
Okay. Commissioner Milkie?
So, Dave, if you could correct me, but, but my understanding is that, so, the challenge that went before the Growth Management Hearings Board was on the public participation, part of adoption of our comp plan. And so, we held a hearing to open it up so that people could come down and testify, and that we would meet that, that criteria, meet that threshold on public participation, allow anybody to comment with regard to that existing number. But that there are other pending challenges that the Growth Management Board has not made a decision on. And so, so I think that's the unknown in all of this, is, is until they make a decision and either say thumbs up, you did it the right way, or we have, or thumbs down, we have concerns, and we're gonna send it back to you for adjustments. I think that's the part that we don't know, and that we're waiting on. So, there, there are some pending challenges before the Growth Management Hearings Board with regard to the comp plan that we adopted. We're waiting for a ruling on those, those pending charges, if you will, or, or concerns. And once they make a decision, then that kind of lays out what our schedule would be. I think what we're trying to do is kind of do a parallel track, is, I mean, number one, we have an appeal going. We did have a hearing to a deal, deal with public participation, and we have a third parallel, which is we're going back and trying to, I guess, reinforce things that we believe are already in the record, and maybe trying to make them even more explicit in the record about how we came to the decisions that we did. And so, so we're not waiting, we're not waiting for a decision to come down, we're going forward on like three different paths. If a decision does come down, we may have to adjust our path to do it. And so, I think, you know, I think we've kind of inherently said this is probably a nine-month endeavor before we can close the book completely. If we get a favorable ruling, it may be a lot less. If we get a unfavorable ruling and requires more work, it might be a little bit less. And so, I don't think he's trying to duck the question at all, it's just, right now, the ball is in somebody else's court, and we're trying to guess how they're gonna volley it back.
So, that nine-month period of time started yesterday, today, three months ago, or last November, as the state ruling?
I'd say like this month. July 1st, we're like, approximate timeframe of what would it take before we think that we could, in anticipation of, of, you know, whatever issues might be raised, what would it take for us to make sure we go back and support the record, and reinforce the record even more, to basically clearly talk about where we think that we have addressed what the Growth Management Act requires us to do? And I'll talk a little bit more about that once the public testimony is, is completed tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So, when we opened up the hearing this evening, there were only two people that were signed up to provide any testimony. I do see that a couple folks have come in since we've started the hearing, so if you want to provide testimony this evening, I'd ask that you fill out one of the yellow slips and give it to the clerk here, and would also tell you that if you provided testimony at the last hearing, this is not an opportunity to take a second shot. We're trying to perfect the record, and so you can provide testimony once in the hearing process. So, if you want to provide comments, but don't necessarily wanna provide oral testimony, you can do that by submitting the yellow slip and just indicating that you don't wanna provide any oral testimony this evening. And so... Okay. And, and again, if you provide testimony, you can, three minutes, we have a timer. When you reach the end of the three minutes, I'll give you the high sign and ask you to try and wrap up your comments. So, I have Laura Ackerman.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Laura Ackerman of the Lands Council, 25 West Main, Suite 222-99201. First off, I want to start by saying that, for the record, the Lands Council officially signs on to the Futurewise comments regarding this issue. And I'm not gonna talk much, I'm just going to show you some photos, and this is a project that Futurewise put together. This be better for you to see them, or would you just like me to hold them up for you? Is this okay? All right. These are photos of infill, and these particular ones, and they are labeled, you probably cannot see them very well, I have to put my glasses on to read a few of them to you. This is Freya and 14th, just as an example, and this is Riverside and Oak on Riverside and Brown's Edition. Here's a Peaceful Valley one. These were taken in 2012, and they're pretty much still there. Here's some more, 2012 infill photos. Here, again, and the vast majority of these are still vacant. These are some recent ones that were just taken on the weekend, and these are all on North Division, or almost all on North Division. This is East Sprague, and this starts from about Division, and there are several of them on there. There are just dozens of vacant lots. In fact, I have a whole list that I can email you, that's just, and I just took ones on Sprague and the ones on Division. There, and then there are a few, and, well, there's lots of other places in the, in the city that are vacant. So, this starts here at East Sprague. This is actually a new development, but it has a lot of vacancies in it. And here is, this one is the old Learning is Fun Building across from Costco, this is a near one. These are out at the Spokane Industrial Park. This is right here, at the Geiger Exit. This is a building that is set there. I've lived on the West Plains for 16 years, and these have never been developed, it's all been infill. And here's a couple things that some people wanted me to point out. This is the old Albertson's Building on Northwest Boulevard, and this person wishes that it were affordable housing. This is the old Spokane Visitor Center. And just, here's a bunch more. So, you get my idea why we don't want the urban growth area expanded. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you leaving those pictures as part of the record? Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, I have a Sharon Torgerson, but she wants to yield her time to Lloyd Torgerson, and the challenge I have is that, Mr. Torgerson, you've already provided testimony and stuff, so is there somebody else that you can yield your time to, or is... Are you sure? Okay. I'm just, well, if you hadn't already provided testimony, she could, but because you're already on the record, I'd be giving you, yeah, and stuff, I'd be opening it up twice, which creates some heartache. Agreed? That's what I said, she could provide some testimony if you'd like. Okay. My suspicion is, I don't know this to be a fact, my suspicion is that this is probably not gonna be the last night for, for providing testimony, so if that turns out to be the case, then you might be able to yield your time to somebody else at the next hearing, so, as, as an opportunity, so. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to provide any testimony on a hearing item tonight? Second call for anybody who would like to provide any testimony on a hearing item tonight. Third and final call for anybody who would like to provide any testimony on a hearing item tonight, seeing none, we're going to Commissioner Milkie. Well, I was, I was, I was gonna look to my fellow commissioners for directions, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as I've thought through this, and I, and I kind of made some remarks a little bit earlier, as far as where we're at, is, is in 2001, when the original comp plan was adopted, the, the powers that be at the time, which I think predates all of us as elected officials, decided that the Spokane area was going to adopt a more stringent or aggressive timeframe than what state law required. And so, the anticipation was that we were going to adopt the first comprehensive land use plan required under the Growth Management Act in 2001, and that we would be doing updates every five years thereafter. And the, the state law was requiring a 10-year, a minimum 10-year update, so we adopted a more aggressive schedule. And a couple things I think that this community has learned since 2001 is, first, that to do one of these updates, when it says it's a comprehensive land use update, it's also a comprehensive update, which is, I think there's a far more work than anybody ever anticipated, that requires a lot of analysis by special consultants on land quantity analysis, environmental impacts, and those things. And so, it's very common that when you engage a consultant to do an analysis, that it is, you know, a three-year analysis. Well, when you're on a five-year cycle, and it takes you three years to do it, and by the time you complete your analysis, the population forecast has changed, and then, and you have people that say, well, let's go and start all over again. What we do is we get into a cycle where we're never in a position to do an update. And, and so, the update for this region was supposed to happen in 2006, and it continued to get pushed off, pushed off because it requires some coordination of all the jurisdictions in the region. So, 2006 obviously came and went, 2008 came along, and most of us know what happened in 2008 with the economy, so the legislature decided to push back deadlines in 2008, recognizing that, that developments that were anticipated were now challenged from an economic perspective, and so they tried to allocate more time. Since that time, as a region, we've gone back and said, why are we trying to be more aggressive, and we're actually getting rulings against this region, not because there's a violation of state law, well, technically, I take that back. So, the issue is, is you're in violation of the Growth Management Act, and the Growth Management Act requires you to comply with not only the deadlines under the state statute, but also under any locally imposed deadlines that you've adopted. So, in most cases, a lot of the rulings said you're in violation of your own rules. And so, as a region, this region went back and said, why don't we align our deadlines with the same deadlines that are adopted in state statute? And we've done that. But again, we still have not completed an update that was initially anticipated in 2006. So, we have gone back, we have adjusted population forecasts based on new, new projections, new... We have adjusted population forecasts based on new projections, new numbers. We've tried to go back and re-imin technical reports. And at some point, you got to bring it to conclusion. And we now have people saying, well, all the circumstances have changed once again, and maybe you should start all over again. So at some point, you have to, have to bring some closure to this. So we adopted a regional comprehensive plan update last summer. And it was intended to do a couple of things. It was intended to recognize any things that were left out of the 2001 comprehensive plan adoption. The very, the one and only for the entire region is, did we miss anything? Did we, was there anything that should have been included? And so that was, are there urbanized areas that are already urban, that already have public water, public sewer, that should have been in the UGA in 2001 but didn't get included, so those should go in? Are we trying to make sure that we recognize and accommodate anticipated growth, recognizing that the Office of Financial Management at the state puts out a projection for every community? They put out a low projection, they put out a median projection, and they put out a high projection. The median is defined as the number most likely to show up in your community if you do nothing. If you just let natural growth occur without, without changing anything that you're currently doing. And so the law, as we understand it, does not allow us to go lower than the low or higher than the high unless we can document extenuating circumstances, which requires more consultants and a lot more analysis, and a lot more expenditure of money. So we adopted in 2013 a comp plan update, and we attempted to address a number of things. It was challenged, and the Growth Management Hearing Board has ruled on one element of challenge. And it was challenged by multiple parties on different accounts. But the one that the Hearings Board has made a ruling on was public participation. That after we lowered the number that we were going to plan for in a 20-year cycle, that we didn't have an additional hearing to talk about a lowered number. We'd already had a hearing on the higher number, and so we thought, well, if we're going to have less of an impact, we shouldn't have to have another hearing. But they said, no, you got to have another hearing. So that's the hearing that we had. We are, again, pursuing this on several fronts. We are appealing the Hearings Board ruling. We have had another hearing to deal with public participation. And we are continuing to try to communicate the basis for our comp plan update. So as I've been thinking about this, one of the things that I've been concerned about in this dialogue for several years now is that, for some reason, the focus has become strictly on population and what the population projection is. And I, and I think what troubles me about that is, the Growth Management Act has 13 goals to it. And for some reason, this entire community dialogue has become fixated on just one. And it's, are you accommodating future projected population growth? And of course, some people want us to plan for the high projection, some want us to plan for the absolute low. We all recognize there are cycles that we go through, and we're trying to figure out how to put together a 20-year plan, recognizing that we will go through at least one, maybe two, even three cycles in that 20-year period, and we will get a chance to update it, like I say, every 10 years. So again, my concern is there are 13 goals. And I know we had a lot of dialogue as a board in our work sessions since 2005, trying to put together an update about all the various goals. And they include things like making sure that we accommodate the 20-year anticipated needs for other governmental entities. And some of you may have heard a discussion that we have school districts who purchase property just prior to the Growth Management Act passing that are literally a block or two or six blocks outside the UGA. And the difference in building a high school inside the UGA and being able to hook up to sewer, since you can't extend sewer outside the UGA, versus building an onsite wastewater treatment facility adds probably $8 to $10 million to the cost of a high school in this region. And so we're supposed to, under the Growth Management Act, anticipate the future needs of other governmental entities, whether they be school districts, fire districts, cities, towns, et cetera. In addition, one of the other goals is that we are supposed to acknowledge and accommodate and incorporate into our plan any environmental needs that we have. And we have been going through a very long dialogue with how to clean up the Spokane River and protect our aquifer as measured at Long Lake, which means that we're also responsible for making sure that we don't have a lot of phosphorus and sediments coming down Leittaw Creek and the Little Spokane River. So part of that dialogue has been the environmental concerns of phosphorus entering the Little Spokane River. And we have housing developments from the 70s and 80s up near the Mead Airport who are on septic systems that do not filter phosphorus. And so, so part of this plan was, was are we meeting the goal under the Growth Management Act to address environmental concerns that need to be addressed within 20 years? And so, you know, considering that a typical septic system has a lifespan of 20 to 30 years, depending on how it's maintained, and many of those are beyond 30 years old now, I can pretty much tell you that good planning says, we are going to have a whole inventory of septic systems that will begin failing within this 20-year period. And that these parcels are urban-sized in nature. Some would say they're on the large end of the urban, but, but like I say, the neighborhoods out by Mead Airport don't look a lot different than the neighborhoods out Indian Trail. And when those things happen, they do not have enough land on those parcels to build another drain field. And, and so some have testified that we shouldn't do anything, and that when they do fail, we should just declare an emergency and then extend a sewer line then. And meanwhile, we continue to spend far more money. Mead Junior High, Mead School District put a junior high out there and had to do a batch wastewater treatment system on site that ran them approximately $4 million. Well, that's just one parcel and just one way to fix it. And yet, we could have extended a sewer trunk line to them for a total cost of about $7.5 to $8 million. And so, so there are a number of things. So what I'm saying by all of this, in a very circular fashion, as I normally do, is what I would like to do is, is, you know, we have the map that depicts what was adopted in the comp plan that was adopted in the summer of last year. And, and the rust-colored areas are the added properties that were adjusted. Some were added, some were taken out. But I don't think that we've done a really good job of explaining, when I look at a very specific parcel, what were we trying to accomplish? Was this one of those areas that even before 2001 was already an urban neighborhood that had public water and public sewer, and for some reason just was not included in 2001? Which of these areas are to accommodate school sites? You know, which ones are to accommodate other governmental entities, whether it be a jail site or, or others? So what, what I would like to do is ask our staff to build a matrix that basically identifies, I think, is it 21 different, about that, 21 different, different changes in land use, if you look around the map? So what I'd like to do is do a matrix that basically lists the 13 goals of the Growth Management Act. And I would like a list of those 21 parcels, and not only, whether it be a checkbox or whatever, that says, what, which one of those 13 goals were we trying to meet in bringing this land in? And then an explanation at the end of that. I don't know that we've really taken the time to summarize, you know, our thoughts and our reasoning as we put that together. And I hope that the product of doing that will be that people go, okay, so this particular parcel was because it was a split parcel, and the Growth Management Act says, when you own a piece of property, half of it shouldn't be inside the UGA and half of it outside the UGA, and half of it shouldn't be zoned residential and the other half commercial. It strongly discourages you from doing that and saying they should be uniform, uniform. So, so that's my goal by doing this. I think that I also would like to, besides having a matrix, looking at the 13 goals of the Growth Management Act, I would also like to take a look at the specific WACS, Washington Administrative Code, under the Growth Management Act that apply to those, as well as the statutes. And then finally, the fourth, the fourth element to measure them against would be the countywide planning policies. So to put this in the form of a motion, Mr. Chair, I guess what I would like to do in anticipation of a future meeting, I would, I would move that the Planning Department develop a matrix that addresses each of the urban growth areas as it relates to these four factors. And that would be the planning goals, the applicable provisions under the Growth Management Act regarding expansion, the administrative codes, as well as the countywide planning policies. And that, that this matrix would be brought back to the Board at a public workshop for review.
A second motion for discussion.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Any more discussion on the motion?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that I would agree with Commissioner Milkie. As I have gone through this process while I haven't been here since 2006, I think one of my biggest frustrations is that, as you read what the Act is set out to do, that it's, it's a planning tool for communities for 20 years' worth of growth, yet you see how it's being implied to be used, how it's, it's being promoted as a no-growth. I get frustrated. I would love to have an opportunity for us to address the 13 goals and actually have a conversation. There's a lot of rhetoric and misinformation out there being presented as fact, and I think there's a lot of misunderstanding by the community. So I would love to have an opportunity to take a look at the parcels that were finally approved in July of last year, and compare those to the 13 goals that were laid out and the other items that you suggested, and really take a look to see how, how they, they fall into place. Because I think that most people will find that the majority of those parcels do meet the goals that are laid out with the, within the Growth Management Act. So I would, I am in support of your comments.
Commissioner Milkie.
Thank you. And, and again, I think that, that the comments that I've heard have been this perceived perception that every piece of property is about adding capacity for future population. That's not the fact. I mean, some of it, some of it is. Some of it's to deal with other inconsistencies. Like I say, the split parcel, the, the needs of other governmental entities, environmental concerns, things like that. I think the other thing that's important to recognize is, if you do absolutely nothing and simply maintain the current policies, you will continue to see population increase over 20 years. And that's that median forecast that's adopted by the Office of Financial Management. I think what's interesting to note is, what we're talking about is, if we do nothing and simply let natural growth occur, we end up with a 20-year population forecast for this county of approximately 612,000 people. That's if we do nothing. That's natural growth. The comp plan that we adopted accommodates 616,000 people over the course of 20 years. So over the course of 20 years, and we know how just making a slight adjustment in an assumption can change a 20-year projection. So the do-nothing option versus what was adopted last year, there's a difference of just over 4,000 in population in 20 years. And to put this into perspective, the difference between doing nothing and what we adopted is about seven tenths of one percent of the total population of this region. And so, so we are literally down to just finessing some assumptions, recognizing that it's a 20-year projection, and we're going to come in sometime in the middle and make adjustments and fine-tune to, to take a look at what's going on with regard to all the factors that can influence a 20-year projection. So, so that's really how close we are. I think some people think that we're worlds apart and would like us to do just nothing. But again, we're talking about a 20-year difference in population of seven tenths of one percent. And I think that's why it's important for this matrix to really spell out how much of this is about capacity, but how much of it is about meeting the other goals of the Growth Management Act that we are supposed to be complying with.
So I'm going to support the motion, and very well said, Commissioner Milkie. And I just want to add a couple of extra thoughts to this. There clearly has been a group within the community that would like to see no new growth, period. But that's not an option. Even if we did nothing and left the boundary exactly the way it is, you're still looking at a population increase of well, well over 600,000. That's just a reality. That's the do-nothing scheme, is you're still going to have a population of well over 600,000. But what do you give up if you do nothing? What you give up is you give up the opportunity to clean up the Little Spokane River aquifer and clean up the drinking water that ultimately ends up in the Spokane River that this community just spent 25 years and tens of millions of dollars to clean up in, in the Spokane Valley. And so if we were so invested as a community to make sure that we could clean up and remove septic tanks off of the Spokane Valley, why would we not want to invest the same type of energy only in a proactive position as opposed to a reactive, which was the Valley proposal, and get ahead of the growth? And be able to extend sewer up there so that we can remove that potential pollution over the Little Spokane River corridor, watershed, and the Spokane River? So, you know, we can't extend sewer outside of the UGA. By extending the UGA, we can do something in a proactive. And it's interesting, because those that would say do nothing, well, wait until there's a crisis. Wait until there's emergency, and then react then. That's not planning. That's a lack of planning. And so we have to get ahead of the curve. And to be able to take, to provide sewer for those folks that have already built, that were already under construction, neighborhoods that are already existing, that are existing on septic systems, we have to be able to do something to get ahead of the curve on that. One of the other requirements is that we, we protect key assets for the community, which includes Fairchild Air Force Base and Spokane International Airport. In the last couple of years, Spokane International Airport has acquired, for the second parallel runway and other aviation requirements for the airport, over 1,300 acres of light industrial land up on the West Plains. And with our adjustment, we added back in 1,100 acres, and then that was reduced again back to, I think, around eight or 900 acres. So even with the expansion that we did, we actually have less light industrial area in the county after the expansion than we had before, because that acreage, 1,300-plus acres, is dedicated to the second parallel runway for SIA to accommodate the expansion of that critical asset for the region. The other thing that's happening is that with the McCleary decision, school districts are in a position to where they now have to figure out how they're going to reduce their class size. And that means building new schools. That means building new schools even if the population didn't increase, because they've got to be able to reduce their class size. There's not an inventory of available zoned residential land and large enough parcels for the school districts to be able to meet their needs. So School District 81 today is buying light industrial land next to heavy construction to build new middle schools. This is not good planning. This is not even good sense. But this is the position we've left ourselves in because we've constrained our ability to meet the needs of this community. It's interesting, as part of the rhetoric that we hear surrounding this issue on a global basis, is, well, we've got to be able to stop sprawl. That's one of the requirements in the Growth Management Act. Make sure that you adopt land use policies that prevent sprawl. This April, Smart Growth America, which is the only nationally recognized nonprofit organization that has actually developed a metric for measuring sprawl, completed and published the survey, a national survey, that ranked the top 994 urban counties in the country, and we're, we're ranked in the top 9.7% of good quality communities using smart growth strategies to address the growth issues. Sprawl's not our problem. And anybody that says it is, I'd like to see the And anybody that says it is, I'd like to see the metric that you use, metric, best available science, something that is actually quantifiable, other than just political rhetoric, to defend the position that sprawl is a concern for this community, because the numbers and independent third-party organizations have already said that they don't support that. My last comment is that not only did we expand in certain areas to try and keep our boundary current with growth trends that are happening in the community, we also reduced it in some areas. And I want to think specifically about the Thorpe-Westwood area, that we eliminated out of the boundary and eliminated that residential population that was going to happen there, and that has to go somewhere. So if you're going to eliminate it there, you've got to make that up somewhere else. Third and last statement, or final last statement. 2001, we adopted our comp plans, and we made a variety of different assumptions about how growth was going to occur. And for the most part, all of the jurisdictions were able to hit their targets pretty good. All of the communities except for the city of Spokane, they missed their projected growth accommodation by almost 15,000 residents. Well, those residents have to go somewhere, and if they're not going into the city, they're going in either the uncorporate area or the other cities. And when you look at where the boundaries were expanded at, it was really out in the valley and up north, not adjacent to the city of Spokane. It's interesting that when we were going through this process, the planning commissions then made recommendations to a committee that's comprised of elected officials from throughout the county. Every city in the county has a representative on this Growth Management Steering Committee of elected officials. And that body got together and looked at every one of these areas to be considered, and they voted to either support or reject areas that should be included in the boundary. And I think it should be noted that that body of elected officials, much broader than just the three of us, includes all 13 cities plus the county commissioners, they voted to approve a boundary much larger than what the Board of County Commissioners finally adopted. Larger. And they're the communities that are adjacent to the proposed growth that was included in the expanded boundary. So I applaud Commissioner Milkie for getting us back to, you know, a metric and a matrix that'll help put definition to each one of the actions so that we can help explain to the community that there's good, solid reasons for why these areas were brought in. They were brought in so we could clean up the river. They were brought in to support schools. They were brought in to support the airport, to support Fairchild Air Force Base, and to true up the maps so that the maps actually reflect what's on the ground. So I look forward to staff coming back with this presentation and us engaging in a workshop and continued dialogue around this so we can move this issue hopefully to closure. So are there any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Let the record reflect the motion passes unanimously. Then Commissioner Milkie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess when we assign a task, it's always important to understand when we're going to follow up. And so in light of the fact that we just adopted another task to compile information, I think it's appropriate that we define a time that we bring that back so that we have a defined endpoint, that we bring that information back and are able to review that. So I would make a motion that the board hold a public workshop on the completed matrix to be held on Thursday, July 31, 2014, starting at 3:00 p.m., so a time slot from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., at a meeting location to be determined by the clerk of the board. Most likely, we'll be here, unless the room is already taken. So this room is already reserved for that date? For deliberations? Okay. So...
I would second that motion, then.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Again, like I said, I don't want to, I want to continue forward momentum with regard to this topic and with regard to this discussion, and I know it's very easy to lose sight of timeframes during the summer months in this region, and so just want to make sure that we are setting benchmarks of when we can get back together again.
Okay.
That works for me.
Very good. So I've got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Let the record reflect the motion passes unanimously. Any further actions, Commissioner Milkie? Commissioner Quinn?
Just for clarification for our listening audience and those in attendance, we will be continuing the public testimony portion...
Right.
...for future comments.
Right. So I am leaving the record open for continued oral testimony at a public hearing to be set at a future date and location after the workshop, and also leaving the record open for any written testimony between now and the next hearing date.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, then. So we have set July 31 for the workshop. If I'm hearing you correctly, you're anticipating that we will have a public hearing after that date...
Yes.
...to review the information?
Yes.
And that when we have that public hearing after the workshop, that at that point, we will once again open it up to anyone that wishes to testify? So if they've already testified, like right now, people who testified at the last meeting and this meeting were pooled together, so you could only testify once. I guess I'm assuming that the public wants to know, at what point can they provide additional input and respond to what we're doing again? So is it your anticipation that after the workshop on the matrix, that we will then go back into more of a, go back into a public hearing process and accept input based on our work product?
Yes, we would end up going back and taking additional testimony on two items. One, the issue that we have under consideration tonight, but also then, if somebody wanted to provide testimony on new information, which would include the matrix, that they'd be able to provide additional testimony as it relates to the matrix.
Okay.
That's my expectation, but if you've got a different idea, I'm certainly open to consider any other format.
No, no, no. I mean, my whole intent behind this is, you know, when people say, I don't like what you did on the comp plan, I say, well, what part don't you like? And they'll, it's just the whole thing. It's just too much. And my hope by doing this matrix is they can come back and say, okay, I agree with you on this one, this one, and this one, but I disagree with you on that one. I think that's what I've been struggling with, is when I've had people come and say, I don't approve of what action was taken last summer, so far I've not been getting any specific feedback directed at a very specific parcel on that list of 21. And so I'm running out of ideas about how to respond to them and to try to say, well, let me tell you about what we were looking at on that parcel. You know, if we're talking about the Havana parcel up off of Francis, you know, that's the Humane Society. That's where half of their property is inside the UGA and half of it's out. Half of it's zoned residential, half of it's zoned commercial. We're simply trying to put it in one classification. You know, if it's a property out in the valley, Monty del Rey, you know, that's one, I don't know why it wasn't put in in 2001, because it's a residential development with urban density, with public water, public sewer, but for whatever reason, it's outside the UGA. So that's what I'm hoping to drive at by doing this matrix, is I'm hoping that when we open this back up to public testimony and that we have a matrix produced, that people can begin to give us much more specific information if they have concerns about what we did. I mean, obviously, we've heard from the advocates, and advocates are very explicit about, you know, I want this parcel in, and here's why, and I think they've done a great job. I think it's the ones who have been opposed to either part or all of what we did, that I'm hoping that we will become more specific to them, showing me which one on the map they have heartburn over and why. That's what I'm trying to drive this discussion to, that I feel we just haven't had in almost a year now of trying to reach a conclusion.
Well, and to follow up on that, I agree with you. I mean, when we can get the conversation focused on the specifics about the decision that we made, if somebody wants to come down here and testify that they don't want to clean up the Little Spokane River, and so they're going to oppose our decision because of that, then I want that on the record. I want people to come down and say, you know what? We're happy with dirty water, and we're happy with pollution going in the Spokane River, because that's the alternative to what the action is that we did. And so I don't want them to be able to blanket comments and then, you know, skirt the issues. We don't have that opportunity to skirt the issues. We have to be very specific and very targeted about how and why we did and took the actions that we did. And, you know, the airport, it's a great example. There's 1,300 acres of land available for job creation and light industrial lands out in the West Plains that is now dedicated to accommodating the expansion of the Spokane International Airport. And all of us want to be able to make sure that we've got an airport that's sized adequately to meet your needs. So what do we do with that light industrial land that we just took out of the inventory? Where does that development opportunity go to? That's some of the issues that we've had to struggle with and try and find that balance. And I think that by the time you get through with the metrics, the matrix, and identify all of these very critical areas, that you're going to get down to a number that's so de minimis that you're going to ask yourself, why are we spending this much time and resources over a population number that's really de minimis when you're comparing it to a population projection of well over 600,000? So again, I applaud the effort and look forward to having the workshop. So is there any other business for the good of the cause?
You have a motion before you?
No, we voted on both of them.
Did we vote on the date? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Been a long day.
We'll send you a memo. All right, that completes all the business coming before the board this evening, so we are now adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for joining us.